Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the Ojai City Council and Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Regular Meeting, November 11th, 2014. We're a little late getting started. We had a special meeting that began at 6:00, ran a little over, but we're here now. Roll call.
Councilmember Blatt.
Here.
Councilmember Clapp.
Present.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Strobel.
Present.
Before we participate in the Pledge of Allegiance, today is Veterans Day. I'd like for us to remember the men and women who have served our country, who've given so much to preserve our freedoms. And I'll lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several presentations tonight. Our first presentation is a proclamation honoring Los Padres Forest Watch for a decade of protecting the Los Padres National Forest. Mayor Tim Smith will present the proclamation.
Thank you. I'm very honored to have these gentlemen here. Jeff Kuiper, who is the head of the organization called Los Padres Forest Watch, is a community-based organization that works to preserve and restore the forests, mountain streams, rolling hills, wetlands, coastal areas, and wildlife of the Los Padres National Forest. Los Padres National Forest covers nearly 2 million acres of the central coast of California. Los Padres National Forest advocates for protection of our region's public lands and wildlife habitat. Los Padres National Forest advocates for protection of our region's public lands. Los Padres Forest Watch is working with diverse stakeholders to expand the boundaries of wilderness areas in Ojai's backcountry and add dozens of miles of free-flowing rivers to the nation's wild and scenic river system, permanently protecting these lands and waterways for generations to come. The important work of Los Padres Forest Watch would not be possible without the support of hundreds of generous members, local businesses, and dedicated volunteers. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Colin Strobel, on behalf of the Ojai City Council, hereby honor Los Padres Forest Watch for its 10 years of accomplishments for land, wildlife, and water conservation throughout the Los Padres National Forest. Thank you.
And we have a proclamation for you, if you'd like to come up, and you may want to say a few words. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Jeff.[218.68][218.68](APPLAUSE).
Mayor Strobel, Mayor Protem Smith, and the rest of the City Council, thank you so much for this honor. It's truly an honor to be here tonight. We're a small nonprofit organization. We've stuck it out through the last 10 years. We're based in Santa Barbara, but Ojai literally feels like home to us. We have hundreds of members here in the Ojai Valley. The national forest is literally right here on the doorstep of the community. And just about every project that we've worked on in the national forest has had some beneficial impact to the community of Ojai here, whether we're protecting the community's clean water supplies for our farms and our homes, whether we're enhancing tourism and the scenic backdrop of the community, whether we're protecting wildlife habitat, places where people go hiking, camping, horseback riding, fishing. All these things provide a direct benefit to the residents here of Ojai. National forests are not protected like national parks are. National forests are vulnerable to development. They're vulnerable to oil drilling, mining, logging, off-road vehicle trespass, you name it. And national forests require watchdog organizations such as ours to make sure that all the environmental laws are followed when these activities are approved. And sometimes we need to step up and make sure that they're not approved at all. So we are truly thankful for the support that we've enjoyed over the last 10 years from all the residents, businesses here in Ojai. And again, we're thrilled to be here tonight and accept this honor from the bottom of our hearts. So, thank you.
Thank you.[327.27][327.27](APPLAUSE). Our next presentation is for National Harbor Kids PSA in your backyard. Petri, are you here?
Hello, thank you for having me here. My name is Petri Alexandra Williams, 807 Grand and its Safety Harbor Kids. We serve local orphans, foster and homeless children. I have spoken to the council previously, there's a few new faces. We provide career, college, music, and art programs for our kids in our surrounding areas. These children do have no help and end up homeless, and 60% end up homeless and 80% will end up in prison if we do not help these children. And I think I might have fixed my numbers there. What we do with these children is we bring programs directly to them and help them, give them the tools they need to survive. We'd like to thank the city for helping us. We just completed our first PSA for the charity with actor Malcolm McDowell as our spokesperson. And we've had the help of the Presbyterian Church Board, the city of Ojai, Westridge Market, and Rainbow Bridge Market all helped feed our volunteer crew. And we're looking to put this public service announcement, get it on the air, let people know about the cause, and give them the opportunity to help their children right in their backyard. I think we're going to be showing the PSA. I do apologize in advance, it is very harsh, it is based on real-life stories and what we've experienced working with the kids right here in our backyard.
In our world, in our country, and in our cities, on our streets, in the alleys behind our homes, there are orphans, foster and homeless children who are the victims of child abuse and neglect. Hello, I'm Malcolm McDowell. Now, 80% of these children will end up homeless and 60% will end up in prison without our help. They're good kids with bad parents, or no parents at all. They feel helpless, unloved, and full of despair, oftentimes thrust into a world where dangerous influences lurk to prey upon their innocence. Safety Harbor Kids has developed a solution to help these children.
Safety Harbor Kids helped me get a job.
Safety Harbor Kids let me know someone cares.
Safety Harbor Kids helped me go to college.
Help change a child's life forever by supporting safetyharborkids.org today.
I'd like to invite John Williams, he is our founder. John was a parentless child who grew up out of the system and had the vision when he was 16-years-old to start Safety Harbor Kids, to create a place for children to survive and help them.[517.72][517.72](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, sweetie, that was great. Congratulations on your PSA, Petri, that was wonderful and I'd like to thank Malcolm for doing that for us. Thank you for having us present today. And I just wanted to just talk briefly about our Spirit of Goodwill Holiday Challenge that we do every year. We raise 600 toys for orphans, foster, and homeless children within 50 miles of here. We have some homes very close, right here in our backyard as well. And these children are, you know, basically good children with, you know, bad parents. And their parents are either deceased or institutionalized. And, you know, the holidays are a very big time for kids, as you well know, and it's, you know, you take that kind of hope and joy out of their hearts and it really affects them as people. And so we really try and instill that back into their hearts during the holidays, show them that someone cares, give them some nice gifts like, you know, like a lot of the children that we know receive. And, you know, they really will get nothing without our help. We, a quick story, one girl had a birthday and we brought her some nice gifts and we gave them to her and she said she had something special planned with some, say, guardians or people that were associated with her that knew her. Well, those people actually never even showed up that day. And it was her birthday and she was, you know, left by herself and she didn't get any other gift. And we saw her in the next week, she was part of our mentor program where we meet the kids once a week and give them life coaching, educate them in college career, music, and the arts. And we talked to her, "How was your birthday?" And she said, you know, "It was, actually, your present was the highlight of my birthday and thank you very much." So it's really, and we were, I was shocked to find that out. I was like, wow, that was the only gift that she ever got. So it's really important how you help the charity and we thank the community. We have, AJ's Chinese Cuisine has donated to our Holiday Challenge. We have Larry Wilde, Caldwell Banker, Frameworks of Ojai, Ojai Business Center, and a number of other, you know, great people in the community helping. So we'd like to invite everyone here to go ahead and visit our website at safetyharborkids.org, S-A-F-E-T-Y-H-A-R-B-O-R-K-I-D-S dot org, and donate and support a child this year. Thank you.
And I just forgot one thing, we will have a toy drive box at Bliss's Yogurt, so if anybody has gifts. A lot of our kids are 13 to 17-years-old, but there will be a gift box there, or go to www.safetyharborkids.org. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any.
Any questions? Thank you.[686.80][686.80](APPLAUSE). Next, we have recognition of Erin Clapp for the 2014 Historic Preservation Award. And I believe we have someone in the audience, there he is, that wanted to speak. And Erin's here, why don't you come on up, Erin?
Erin, back from Arizona.
Worked out good. Yes, indeed. Good evening, my name's Brian Akins, I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I was honored to chat with Erin outside and catch up on him and get some more personal information. I've known his daughter Jessica and Councilwoman Clapp's daughter. His daughter and my dau-, or their daughter and my daughter ran around together, so it's good to finally meet the parents of a wonderful young lady.[744.88][744.88](LAUGHTER). And she is. I'd like to read a bio that was put together by Rick Bisaccia, who's also on the Historic Preservation Commission, and he put together this for Erin. It says, "Since he was a young man living in the historic Victorian town of Ferndale," we got that right, right? "California in Humboldt County, Erin Clapp has been working as a craftsman, general contractor, and project manager in the restoration of historic buildings." You could say that Erin cut his teeth on restoring Victorian homes. Wait for me to turn my back. "Ojai has had the good fortune that he moved here and since that time has worked on many historic buildings, working to preserve them. Erin has been the main carpenter and project manager for the Pratt House for many years. He replaced many of the rotten rafter tails in old-growth redwood, built much of the replica craftsman-style furniture, and has replaced or repaired many doors and window screens in the house which he built himself. He rebuilt the house's kitchen in period style based on the one at the Green Brothers' Gamble House in Pasadena, building and installing the cabinets. In 2006, Erin was a project manager on the restoration of the William P. Ford House, similarly attending to many historic details in his oversight of the general contractor and performed many fine details, repairs, and replacements on that successful restoration. In a recent project, Erin was the project manager on various restoration and repair work at the Ojai Valley Women's Club, which is City of Ojai landmark number eight. One part of the project required extensive foundation repair, which was going to cost the club some $80,000 to effect. Erin pointed out during the permitting process that since the building was historic, the repairs fell under the umbrella of the Historic Building Code and the work was able to be completed at a fraction of the cost. He also rebuilt and repaired the cabinets in the kitchen, which had been slated for removal, to be replaced with cheaper versions."[875.82][875.82](LAUGHTER). Appreciating the quality of the old craftsmanship, Erin got to work restoring them so they could be used for another century of service to the community. Erin has also worked on myriad other old homes and buildings in Ojai and has done much restoration work on his own 1920's Air Mission-style home, always bringing to his projects high-quality craftsmanship, using old tools and skills from a time commensurate with the homes he works on. He often, we often don't get the opportunity to honor the contribution of the craftsmen who worked to preserve historic homes. Here is one such opportunity, and I especially like this last sentence, "Erin, at no cost to the museum," favorite place of mine, "did a repair to the museum's historic Mission-style front door." And I'm happy to tell, we talked about it earlier, whether they're still working and they're still working fabulous.[931.11][931.11](LAUGHTER). David Mason over there on my left confirmed that. So again, we're happy to award the Historic Preservation Award for 2014 to Erin Clapp. Thank you very much, Erin.[943.63][943.63](APPLAUSE). You're welcome.
And we have the presentation for you. City of Ojai presents the 2014 Preservation Award to Erin Clapp for significant and outstanding contribution to the preservation of Ojai's culture, historical, and architectural heritage. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.[969.56][969.56](APPLAUSE). I'm not taking the speeches, which I'm sure everyone is pleased to hear. I'm deeply humbled and gratified by this recognition of my work. It's always been a passion of mine, but I never expected to get an award for it. So thank you so much to the commission and council and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Just a real quick word about my husband.[1006.84][1006.84](LAUGHTER). Erin's devotion to this kind of work is just, comes deep from his heart and he's, it's true, very rarely does somebody of his capacity and his type of work ever gets recognized. And I just am really thankful to the Historic Preservation Commission to recognize the importance of what he's contributed to the community in that capacity. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, commission reports. Is there any commissioners who would like to make a report to the council? I do not see anyone out there. So we'll move on. The next section is public communications. This is the time on the agenda to discuss items not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, please turn in a speaker card. Limit your comments to three minutes. Please be respectful. And I know we have a lot of people here on 1105 North Signal Street, and so I've asked our city manager to give us a brief update before we even begin the public comment. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, mayor members of the city council. There's several different aspects to this job and I'll just go through and indicate what the current status is of each of those aspects. First of all, there's a six-foot-tall masonry wall that's being built along the access area there. We've made a determination after a great deal of research by the city attorney and staff that that does conform with zoning and should be granted a zoning clearance. That determination is appealable, so if someone wants to appeal it, the appeal would go to the planning commission and then whatever decision the planning commission made on appeal is appealable again to the city council. And so it would not be appropriate for the council to weigh in on that issue until an appeal came forward, if and when. The climbing wall was granted a zoning clearance in 2013 and is being allowed to proceed because the appeal period is passed on that.
Excuse me, the what period?
Appeal period. Due to their location on the site, the house, pool, tennis courts, gym, and landscaping are subject to design review in accordance with the Hillside Development Standards. So we do require design review even for single-family homes when we have a grade of 15% or more in the area of the property where it's affected. So the owner's been informed that a planning commission hearing will be required and that will also include sequel review. We've also informed the owner that they could make an application for concept review. And as you know, concept review is a process whereby the design is brought forward to the planning commission in a non-binding way in order to solicit community input and planning commission input on the concept. But again, if it does go as a formal application for design review, the decision of the planning commission is appealable to the city council.
Thank you. And also before we, before I begin with public comment, Mayor Protem Smith had something that she wanted to share with us because this is Veterans Day.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I was looking, thinking about the fact that it's Veterans Day and what could better imply what it means and what it has meant to our history in the world than a speech by Winston Churchill, which is called "We Shall Fight on the Beaches." So if you will permit me, I will read part of the speech. This speech took place in June 1940, at which point the United States of America was very involved with World War II, but not with troops. We had tremendous amount of weapons going over, we had tremendous shipping, we were very in support of the fight against totalitarianism, as evidenced by what was happening in Europe, where at this point in June 1940, even France had been overcome by a totalitarian regime. So I will read it. "Even though large tracts of Europe and many old and famous states have fallen or may fall into the grip of the Gestapo and all the odious apparatus of Nazi rule, we shall not flag or fail. We shall go on to the end, we shall fight in France, we shall fight on the seas and oceans, we shall fight with growing confidence and growing strength in the air. We shall defend our island, whatever the cost may be. We shall fight on the beaches, we shall fight on the landing grounds, we shall fight in the fields and in the streets, we shall fight in the hills. We shall never surrender. And even if, which I do not for a moment believe, this island or a large part of it were subjugated and starving, then our empire beyond the seas, armed and guarded by the British fleet, would carry on the struggle until, in God's good name, the New World, with all its power and might, steps forth to the rescue and the liberation of the old." Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Smith. Okay, now our public comments. Limit your comments to three minutes. Deborah Moe.
City council members. Deborah Moe, El Paso. Probably two years ago, I came in front of this council regarding handicap parking. Never heard anything, this is the only city in Ventura County and many other counties that has no handicap parking on the main street of Ojai. It's one of the only cities that doesn't have a handicap parking in front of the post office for easy access to our seniors. I'm a caregiver and I was in a conversation tonight with David Mason and, you know, it's kind of absurd and we never, I never heard back originally from coming forward to this. I know that it was told to me that the main drag of Ojai is governed by Caltrans. Is it the public's duty to go to Caltrans? Isn't it the city's duty to do that? I don't think it's fair for the seniors who need a close access, especially to the post office, to park behind the post office, behind the 15-minute spot and hobble to the front door. So I'm asking, and I'm going to come every week until I hear something, to bring this up because it's something near and dear to my heart and I think it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Doojie.
Hello, my name is Doojie Sogar, I'm with the Ojai VFW Post 11461. And first, I'd like to have some of the vets that are here stand to be recognized on Veterans Day if they could. These are your veterans. Thank you, sir, for serving your country. I come for you before, as I did last year, to invite you to our dinner that we're going to have on December 2nd and offer the VFW, for the city council, to get to know your veterans of the VFW, as we're losing several of our W-2s all the time and it's getting really sad. So I would like you to meet these people that served our country, so it's an invite. Some of you did come last year, all the Haxton Hines enjoyed themselves, I hope. So there's my invitation from the Ojai Post 11461. Thank you.
Thank you, Doojie. Dawn Felling. Did I even get close this time?
Dawn Teeding. North Signal, North Signal Street. Good evening. I would like to thank you for listening to concerns about development at 1105 North Signal Street and being responsive. I have been informed by city staff that the over-six-foot-high masonry wall was issued a building permit nine days after neighbors spoke out at the last city council meeting and is now appealable to the planning commission within 15 days for $500. The climbing wall structure is being allowed to proceed with no appeal process offered for an approval that was not noticed to the public. Of great relief is the fact that a planning commission hearing will be required following sequel review for the remainder of the project, thus affording environmental protections and allowing public participation moving forward. Yet unanswered questions remain, how is Ojai following state and local law? I again ask, what zoning regulation allows the director to exempt a 1,600-square-foot, 25-foot-high enclosed climbing wall structure from design review? And how does this giant cube in a semi-rural area comply with Ojai zoning regulation, Section 10-point-two, excuse me, Section 10-dash-2-point-8-0-1, that ensures development that produces an environmentally desirable character, is compatible with existing development, and protects the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties consistent with the general plan? And here we have the elephant in the room, consistent with the general plan. Consistency with the general plan is required by Ojai's own zoning regulations and California State Law, Government Code, Section 65860. The conservation element of Ojai's general plan affords protection to cultural resources. Ojai zoning regulations do not. Therefore, the city's zoning regulations are inconsistent with the city's general plan. This potentially invalidates actions supporting development at 1105 North Signal Street and the zoning regulations themselves. The zoning regulations can be amended so that they are consistent with the general plan, but what can be done for the cultural resources? Ojai's general plan calls for the conservation of natural resources, potential cultural resources, and historic buildings, and sets forth Ojai's vision of its future to preserve Ojai's small-town character, maintain compatibility between Ojai's built and natural environment, and manage the pace of growth and development to achieve a compatible fit between new development and the existing characteristics of the surrounding community, neighborhood, and area. If this had happened at, for development at 1105 North Signal Street, I would not be here before you tonight. I urge you to direct staff to immediately address the lack of cultural resource protection in the Ojai zoning code and ensure consistency of all development with the city's general plan. Once again, I ask the city of Ojai to comply with state and local laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Alistair Cohen.
Hi there, my name's Alistair Cohen. I've been an Ojai resident for 36 years and I'm also commenting tonight in this comment period on the development at 1105 North Signal Street. The past year has seen a series of errors related to the development of the eight-acre property at 1105 North Signal Street adjacent to the Pratt Trail Access Road. First, the City of Ojai granted a ministerial approval for the project, an 11,120-square-foot residence to be built to replace an existing historic home and a climbing wall surrounded by a 25-foot-high square wall. There's no evidence of environmental review and neighbors were not notified at that point. A small garden shed might well be granted ministerial approval, but a 25-foot-tall climbing wall enclosure should not. The eight-acre property is in a highly sensitive archaeological area and should have been afforded cultural resources protection under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. The City of Ojai did not require this. After considerable public outcry, the property owner hired a Native American monitor and an archaeologist. Chumash or earlier artifacts have been found. The archaeologist performed, in her own words, "a simple survey." A quick look from the Pratt Trail Access Road confirms that almost the entire property visible from there has been bulldozed and scraped clean. Many chumash relics may have been destroyed in the process. Ojai, home to slow-growth and to restrictive building codes that have resulted in a beautiful community that is much treasured by its inhabitants, actually has no cultural resource protection in the city's zoning ordinance, which sets out the conditions for property development. How could this be? Cultural resources are listed in the conservation element of the city's general plan, but not in the city's zoning ordinance, leaving both the zoning ordinance itself and this particular property development inconsistent with the city's general plan. So at 1105 North Signal Street, we have a family's dream home site soon to be built around the bulldozed debris of our native ancestors. These issues have been brought to the City of Ojai's attention by concerned citizens and neighbors. The City of Ojai appears recently to have backtracked and is now requiring design review for the remainder of the project, but it is not yet clear when cultural resources analysis under CEQA will be required. The new design review requires compliance with the city's hillside development standards. Why was compliance with the hillside development standards not required a year ago? The city is certainly not swamped with requests for new building permits. The current situation is ripe for legal action, costing the property owners both lengthy delays and funds that they could use elsewhere. A good start for the City Council will be to direct their staff promptly to include cultural resources in their zoning ordinance so that this situation does not come up again. They should also ensure appropriate monitoring of the cultural resources on this property under CEQA, respecting the native ancestors. Thank you for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, have we already directed you to bring back before us the issue of the exemption process?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll be on the agenda on the 27th of January.
Okay. And at the same time, can you bring the issue of this historic cultural resource issue that's being brought to our attention now, can that be brought at the same time? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor. Councilmember Clapp.
The woman that spoke earlier, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name.
Dawn.
No, can we get, I'd love a copy of what you wrote. Could you maybe give it to the city clerk or, if you could copy? Thank you. I appreciate it.
And another thing I'm wondering if maybe we should bring back is the question of the legality in the first place of the director's exemption for the climbing wall. Whether that was ever legal in the first place? I'd like the attorney's opinion on that.
Heatherton McFarland.
Hi, I'm Heather McFarland. I'm the archaeologist for 1105 Signal Street, Signal Road. The first time I was called out there was to look at the climbing wall itself, that area, and that was...
Did you get the microphone?
And that was a simple survey that we were talking about, is that one single area, which is outside of the recorded site. After that, when it became obvious that they were going to be doing work within the recorded site, we initiated a Phase One and a Half, which extended Phase One, to judge whether or not the site had been destroyed as was reported back in 1961. We did several trenches out there and we found artifacts, but they were all pretty much on the surface and in destroyed areas. What had happened was the top cap of the site had been pushed over the sides and so we didn't find any intact cultural deposits. Cultural deposit is like a layer cake and what makes it important is we've got, you know, the earlier material at the bottom, more recent material on top. When that's bulldozed, it pretty much just is gone. The heavier materials just roll about on the surface and have no context in terms of archaeology, in terms of scientific value. They do have value to the chumash and they do have value in terms of being artifacts. As part of the report that we're doing, we did collect and document all the artifacts that were on the site. They all date pretty much to the late, early period and there is a component, middle-period component as well. But as I say, the scientific importance of the site is pretty much destroyed, it's gone. We are going to be doing the lab work now and writing a report and presenting that to the city. This is a phased, extended Phase One, and it is in compliance with CEQA. And if anybody has any questions, that report should be available in the next couple of weeks.
Madam Mayor, I just have one question.
Yeah.
When you say that the significance of the site had previously been destroyed, is that what you're saying was done in 1964?
The scientific significance, yes. It was destroyed when they removed the artifacts from the matrix in which they were, had been laid down.
So that wasn't something that was done recently?
No, no, that was in 1961. It was reported as destroyed to UCLA, to the head archaeologist there. And nobody had done a Phase One, which is an initial survey of that site. That would have been done if the city had requested a quick search from Cal State Fullerton, who is the clearinghouse for this area. That wasn't done, but people spoke up that there wasn't a recorded site there and so we took care of it as necessary. The initial survey, like I said, was only for that climbing wall that is outside of the recorded site area. The rest of the area has been looked at as part of our extended Phase One.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leo Tumamite.
I'm the cultural monitor at 1105 Signal Street. Business as usual. I'm still watching the trenches for anything else that might come up that's still in context. Like she said, it's destroyed from 1960, in the 60s. It's just, it's the way it goes, you know? But on a side note, that's as far as that's going. They're doing everything that they can and they're working with us, so it's good. Does anybody know what "chumash" means? Anybody?
Go ahead, please.
Because I've lived here forever. Huh?
Just go ahead and tell us.
It means money. "Mosh" means money, the makers of money. No, it's, my point is, you guys all live here, you've been around here, there's locals everywhere, nobody even knows what that means. So why would you care? What I'm saying is, the makers of money, the reason why they called us that, my family's directly related to Santa Cruz Island and Malibu. We moved over here very, very early to Malibu. That's what the mainlanders called the islanders because they made Shelby money. The mainlanders didn't, but we're still called "chumash." People call Native American, you're a Native American, anybody who's born here is a Native American, American Indian, obviously not even close. As you can see, the pattern is, we have an identity crisis just in our name. Like even calling, you guys are calling us the wrong thing, just period. It's not a big deal, that's just the way it is, you know? Topa Topa Mountain, the Bluffs? That's Mount Cesar. It was misnamed on a map in the early 1900s. We still call it Topa Topa. It's like, nobody knows anything about this place and everything that we do know is in the intact soil. Stop tearing up our stuff. Stop letting people tear up our stuff. It's pretty simple. Let's move forward, okay? 1105, right on. Everything else, and I think people know what we're talking about. Thanks.
Shalom Joshua.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. I'm Shalom Joshua. I live at 1205 North Signal Street and I'd like to begin by giving my own thumbs up to Aaron Clapp, who did some work on my home. He's also done other work on Signal Street. The work is beautiful. It is fine work. And it's an appropriate thing to bring up as contrast to what I see happening at 1105. Pardon me for using what was earlier a presentation to make a point, but it is appropriate. Anyone who sees what is sometimes called the giant cube, which someone else might call a storage unit, 25 feet high, this is the antithesis of what should be in the foothills of Ojai. You know, you look at it and you go, ouch, you know, what is this? What is something that is of a metallic, non-natural emanation doing in this part of our foothills? And this is something that, as I'm understanding, is not currently being considered for any meaningful review, that it's been stamped as approved, even though all of us who live near it, as well as all of us who live in Ojai, haven't had a chance to comment on it, with that approval having been somehow magically almost gone through our local bureaucracy here and is supposedly untouchable. Well, I don't think that's right. I think that we ought to love Ojai enough to not let this happen, you know? This is a special place and the longer I live here, the more I understand and appreciate how special it is. If we do this, if we allow this kind of construction to go on, it's like what you hear in a national sense when they talk about mission creep, you know? Are we letting something get out of control that we don't want to have happen in the first place? And that's what this is, you know? If it doesn't feel right, think twice about it, make every effort, invite every part of the community in to have a say in what is happening, because it's happening right now before our eyes. And, you know, we ought to do this for Ojai, not for one person, not for five persons, not just for the neighbors there, for Ojai.
I was going to speak regarding the E.J. Harrison time, so...
That's an agenda, so...
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That's item number two, so I'll call you back then.
Thank you.
Steve Quillacy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Steve Quillacy, West Eucalyptus Street. If we're done with the ranker that, justified or not, we've certainly seen a lot of this evening, I wanted to maybe speak of something more pleasant. And it's one of your consent calendar items on road rehabilitation. I am very pleased to see that there is some road rehabilitation going on in the city and I'm wondering if anyone could point me to a schedule for doing more of it.
Okay, that's on tonight's agenda?
It's on the consent calendar, ma'am.
Well, when we go to the consent calendar, we'll pull that and let you speak on it.
Okay.
How's that? And it's... Item K. So I'll call you back up then. Okay, back to un-agendized comments. Oh, I think that's the end of my cards on this. It is. So we're going to go on to the consent calendar, we'll pull Item K. Any other items council would like to...
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Absent Item K.
Roll call.
Flatts?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. And we've pulled Item K, which is the 2013 road rehabilitation project, notice of completion. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The question was, do we have a plan for what roads are going to be paved in the future? We do have in our five-year capital improvement plan, and I believe, although I'd have to check also on our website, the list of roads that are going to be paved during the current year, we're also working on a pavement management plan that will help guide the decisions on the paving for future years. But I think the most important point is that we, the council has allocated an increasing amount of money over the years to the point where we're designating $600,000 a year towards catching up on the road repaving. So there will be, as long as that continues, regular road repaving projects going on in the city.
Any comments from council for Mr. Clark? Okay, Mr. Quillacy?
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Quillacy, West Eucalyptus Street. I wanted to compliment the council on doing that budgeting for road rehabilitation and if there is a place on the city's website or somewhere else that I could see a schedule, I would very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public on the road rehab... That's it, speech therapy next week. It's come to that. Anyone else in the public wish to address that?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Clapp?
I think the road paving schedule's on the website, isn't it, Greg?
Yes.
Okay, it is, Mr. Quillacy. Maybe Greg could help you find it.
Counsel's pleasure.
I will move for approval of Item K.
Second.
Roll call.
Flatts?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, E.J. Harrison and Sons' franchise agreement. Mr. Clark? Which number is the... Oh, that's item number three. Okay, it was, forgive me. It was requested earlier that we move item number three before, to before the public hearing, and so I'm going to do that. Item number three is a discussion item, consulting services by and between the city of... Pardon?
She was wondering if there was anyone from the Planning Commission still here.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the agenda. We're going to take out of order a discussion item number three, consulting services by and between the city of Ojai and Sargent Town Planning. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Ms. Wald will give you a very brief introduction.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I just heard you guys move the items around, so I hurried in here. So as you recall, we had this previously on an agenda for ratification of the contract, or at least for you to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service contract between the city of Ojai and Sargent Town Planning. And during that meeting, it was discussed to have it continued tonight so that he could give a presentation. I know you guys... And I know you guys all had that earlier this evening with the planning commission. And with that said, we just would want to note that we have all the information in the packet for you to make the determination tonight to go forward with this. And staff, and I believe Mr. Sergeant is still here in the, somewhere in the city for... Huh? Oh, he's right there. Hi. To answer any questions you might have. And with that, I guess that kind of sums it up. Like I said, resolution and everything is in your packet for ratification. Thank you.
Okay, and before I continue, I'm going to try to explain that this item is on the council's agenda. We earlier had a special meeting between the Ojai City Council and the planning commission. For the planning commissioners to have remained, we would have had a majority. And so I'm going to ask that we accept the comments made by the attendees of the planning commission at the six o'clock meeting. If there, when I call for public comment, there may be planning commissioners, there may not. You guys are just handing me these cards left and right, aren't you? Okay. All right, give me just a moment to... All right, now we're on item number three. All right, the only card I have for item number three... Oh, I'm... Questions from council members?
Madam Mayor, I do have a couple of questions regarding the presentation today. And I appreciate Mr. Sergeant for coming and answering them very well. I do have a couple of concerns in regards to this RFP. I am still unclear what, who's going to dictate really what we're going to focus on, because I see, there was a couple of comments by some of the planning commissioners that said we need to upgrade all our zoning ordinances. And that, to me, to do that is going to be time-consuming, and it's going to present a very large workload for commissions, community, council, et cetera, et cetera. And then on the RFP, we suggested that we would focus on frontage. But then also on the RFP or the application, there was, it was noted that community outreach would be done, and their input is going to be very valuable and could possibly sway the focus of the services. So my question is, and I guess it's to Mr. Sergeant, what, where do you see this coming into? Would you suggest focusing on specifics or going by what the community wants? I just want some clarity before we enter, because it could be a long process.
Yeah, that's good. Is this on okay? Okay. We responded, as you say, to the RFP, which identified an interest in a process which engaged the community in looking at a high level at how your neighborhoods are structured, how, what they're made of from a design standpoint, what levels of differentiation exist or are wanted between different neighborhoods. The term "one-size-fits-all zoning" was used a few times, which most communities have that, and to their detriment in most cases. So the first phase of work, I think, is mostly what we would call discovery, which is to, by looking at the place, by talking with the community, by speaking with your planning commission, with your Complete Streets Committee, with your staff, with yourselves, to find out what people are most concerned about. And only after that assessment or discovery of the, what's important is in place, will it be completely clear what would be the highest priority topic to address first. The RFP identified frontages as the thing to focus on. Knowing what we know now, which is a lot, but nowhere near as much as we would know after we have interviews with a bunch of your folks and workshops and stuff. That's a smart move, we think, because that's the seam between the public street and private property. And that's really what defines how you perceive the town more than any other one thing. And we think that, we think that's probably the right place to start. In the process of hearing public, we're not going to, if, in the public input process, if people want to talk to us about things that have very little or nothing to do with frontage, we would want to accept that information. We talked in the earlier presentation about setting up sort of a framework within which we could, we could file away information gained from a particular neighborhood who might want to talk to us about how big certain accessory buildings are, maybe? Or how second units are regulated, or how the street in their neighborhood is repaved. All of that would be sort of organized as in from, as a database to help the planning commission and the city council think about future steps to refine other policies or standards or guidelines or procedures that the city has. So that's a long way of saying, I think frontages is the right place to start. But if we get into this and we have an initial meeting with your planning commission, I hope perhaps you'll form an ad hoc committee consisting maybe of some representatives of planning commission or Complete Streets and maybe some at-large member or something. We would want to listen carefully to what they think are the most important things to focus on. We think that for this scope that we have offered you, we can do both. We think we can get a framework for the whole subject, and we think we can give you a focused deliverable that will be immediately helpful on questions of frontage, fences, walls, even perhaps some tie-ins with your street repaving. That's, it would be one, if there are certain priorities for rethinking the way bicycles or pedestrians or landscape is integrated into some of your streets, that would be a perfect opportunity to coordinate that into your ongoing street improvement program. Does that address what your question was?
Definitely does. And just as a follow-up question, I do realize, and I appreciate your flexibility. And looking at your proposal, you do have some pretty concrete numbers. And I, now talking to you, I could see how experienced you are with doing this type of community work. Would you change that in between? For example, if we didn't have to work with several of your partners because you see this going another way? Are you open to that?
We, we were, we could, if, we could adjust things. We could adjust things. I mean, it's your $50,000, not ours. It's not ours until we earn it. And we only earn it if we do something that's helpful to you. So that was based on the RFP and what we know. That's our best shot. And we would certainly be flexible to work with your staff and with any subcommittee that might be put in place to coordinate the community's desires with our professional capabilities. We could, we could move some of that around a bit.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, councilmembers? For staff or Mr. Sergeant? Okay, I'll go to, I only have one speaker card. Bill Miley?
Bill Miley, North Signal Street. Continuing my comments about the neighborhood planning contract, I would like to first say that, no, I'd like to ask the council two questions. Before you vote on this contract, I would like your council to know the future amount of tax dollars which will likely be spent to complete this neighborhood planning process and bring it to its finish or its ultimate goals. I would like, and once your council knows that, the approximate amount that you tell us, the public taxpayers, the citizens of Ojai, which means all of us who live here. The second question is, I hope your council, before you vote, will know the scope and time involvement which the contract will place on our community planning department staff before you vote on this. And the last thing I'd like to say, and maybe this is, I shouldn't say it, because it kind of supports the neighborhood plan. In my 45 years here, community turnout is really weird. A tree is being proposed to be cut in Libby Park. And we had people out, we had, one of our, one of the people lived in the tree for four years, I mean, four days, and the police had to haul him down. A bear was shot. People were really upset. A month and a half or so ago, or about a month ago, we had a workshop at Sarrazati Park, the building, with the council, with your council and the planning commission on a very important issue, affordable housing. We get 10 people show up. There were more viewed than the public. So I think from, looking at it from the outside, I'm not sure we're going to get a lot of neighborhood involvement in this, because we don't have it on other issues, unless we shoot a bear and propose to cut a tree down. And I don't want that to happen. In fact, I would hope that you would continue this or table it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? I'll bring you back to council.
All right, Madam Mayor. I was one of those that, when we got this before us, without the opportunity to have Mr. Sergeant here and ask that it come for a joint meeting so that we could actually hear it from you as to exactly what you were going to do. Because I felt that the proposal, at least in my opinion, had somewhat of an urban feeling to it. And that concerned me, and it concerned other members, members on the council. That concern has been eliminated. I don't have that concern now. And I was very impressed with your presentation. And I am in a dilemma for two reasons. One is, we had the planning commissioners here, but never got their comments. And I think we have a resource there that I hate to make a decision at this level without knowing the decision at the lower level. And the second thing is, while I can appreciate this $50,000 that is going to be spent on this first phase, and you have to start somewhere, I understand that. And I think it's a good thing for us to start and for us to begin looking at neighborhood plan, planning. The first phase does nothing for us, really, other than kind of set the stage for phases two and phases three and phases four. And this is not going to be a $50,000 affair. This is going to be, this is going to be in the hundreds of thousand dollars affair, I think, by the time we have gone all the way to the end, including the modifications of our zoning codes. So I think we're faced with two things. One is, are we prepared at this point in time to pay $50,000 for something that could sit on a shelf after it's done and collect dust? Because we don't have either the council that is willing to spend the money on going forward with something more? And are we willing to move forward tonight without input from our very valuable planning commission? And for those reasons, I'm having a real dilemma. Because I think, I think it looks like a very good project, and I'm for it. But I have a real problem getting over those two hurdles.
Madam Mayor? Councilmember Clapp?
You brought us some really good points. And one of the first things that came to my mind when you talked about it costing ultimately through time is that it may be a better way to look at our city as a giant house. And when you're going to build a giant house, you need a plan, you need a blueprint. Everything from the foundation up to the crowning touches inside, the trim, the cabinets, the flooring, whatever. And if you start to build the giant house without the blueprint, you quite often have cost overruns. You make tremendous errors that you have to correct that cost you a whole bunch more money than if you had a good set of blueprints to begin with. So I think we need to look at it like a blueprint for the future of the community. And it's an investment over time that ultimately could save money and also save the character of our town that without having that blueprint, we could really stumble and make some tremendous errors. So that's my kind of feeling on that matter. And I also believe our zoning is outdated and is a cookie cutter. It does need to be reworked, because it doesn't work the way it is right now. And I too am disappointed that we didn't get feedback from the commissioners. And that makes me reluctant, because I felt the same way about the presentation. I felt it looked so urban to me. And we're all like freaked out about the urbanization of our town. I think that's one of the things that people fear the most. But having your, had your presentation, I definitely feel that you have a sense of what our community's about and understand how important it is to us to maintain it. And we mentioned change without change. We want to change, but we don't want to change. And I think that was really telling that you understand where we're coming from. But I, again, back to not having the feedback from the commissioners puts me in the conundrum as well, because I really felt that that was an important feedback we didn't get. So I am with you on that. I want to give my approval, but at the same time, we didn't have that opportunity. And so I don't know where to go from there myself.
Councilmember?
Madam Mayor, and I too appreciate your presentation. I thought it was very informative. I look at it as, a council member, Clapp was saying, as a blueprint. And it's hard for me to really accept this because I feel like $50,000 isn't enough to cover our whole zoning codes. And I feel like we really need to start looking at them. I feel like we have identified some that we need to work on. And I don't know if we could do that in-house or using commissions so forth to try to update those ordinance, such as, as you heard this, this evening with 11:05, fences, walls, hedges. We know that's been a consistent issue that we've had in this community. So I think that this is going to cost us a lot more than what we think. If we decide to go with this, I feel like we should just develop the whole blueprint and not just do it, not just piecemeal it. Because at the end of the day, it's going to cost us, I feel like, more money. And even though Mr. Sergeant's services, he's very qualified to perform them, I feel like we should really think about it and see where, which direction this council wants to go. And if we want to find, if we want advice from our planning commission, I think that that's a really smart move. That's where I'm at with this issue.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
I have to agree with all my colleagues and what they said so far. I think the planning commission input would have been invaluable, but it did not happen tonight.
Madam Mayor? I have comments. And that is, over the past year, this council, with community input, reached the consensus that one-size-fits-all does not work for Ojai. We wanted to develop neighborhood planning. We instructed the staff to put together an RFP for Phase One, which is discovery. Staff did that. We had a subcommittee. The, our planning director, city manager, I attended some, councilmember Blatz attended some, of all of the applicants. So we gave staff direction. Staff followed that direction. Phase One is $50,000 in essence for discovery of what the neighborhoods in Ojai want for their neighborhoods. As far as Mr. Miley mentioning, what's the entire project going to cost? There's no way we can respond to that, because we cannot bind future council. All that we can do is decide whether or not we want to pursue Phase One. All that we can do is decide whether or not we want to pursue Phase One, which is discovery on neighborhood planning. Yes or no? So, I'm going to, I'm in the minority here, so what I'm going-
Madam Mayor, may I say something real quick?
Sure.
Councilwoman Laura, you mentioned that there's going to be more phases. It's like a remodeling of a house. This year, I can afford the kitchen, next year, I can afford the bathroom. It's a stage thing, absolutely. We have to budget it. And it's not unreasonable to budget it, because we do need, we did direct staff to do this. We, as a council, agreed five to zero that we want to proceed. And to now have gone, told staff to do this, and say, "Well, no, I don't know if I want to spend fifty thousand, and it's going to cost a lot of money," and blah, 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 that's really, that's not cool. So I don't, I don't want you to misunderstand me. I want to proceed with this, I do. I think the discomfort I have, and I think Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Blatts mentioned, is that the feedback from commission wasn't there. And that's what's making me uncomfortable. Not the proposal, not the decision to proceed with it. I am all in favor of that, and I don't know how to remedy that.
Councilmember Blatt?
Yeah, and I want to, I want to say that the councilwoman's, I listened to what Councilwoman Clapp had to say. And the idea of, of having to look at this as a, as an initial step, and, and hearing the fact that you need a blueprint to move forward, has eliminated my concern about my initial stumbling block. I still have, so my position right now is, because I am in favor of moving forward, is whether or not we want to delay moving forward until the planning commission can give us their feedback, or whether we want to make the decision without the planning commission feedback. That's, that's kind of where I am right now.
Okay.
So what?
Can we have Mr. Sargent at some, a planning commission meeting in the next six weeks or something, present exactly this information, and that we would get the feedback from them?
Well, I, Madam Mayor, I'm not-
Councilmember Laura?
Okay.
I, I guess, my approach of this is, if we're going to spend that fifty thousand dollars, I'd rather really focus on issues with zoning, and not worry about issues with, with developing standards and guidelines. I'd rather do the first phase, in my opinion. And I could absolutely appreciate your guys' point of view about, oh, maybe let's start somewhere and focus on that, and do the discovery. I do, I think that the discovery might take a little bit longer than what we think, and I just want to feel like Mr. Sargent is open to possibly modifying some of his application, which he has said he will. And those are my concerns, that we're just going to piecemeal this, but if the rest of the council feels like we have to start somewhere in discovery, I could also understand that. I'm not, I'm not going to say we shouldn't start, we have to start from somewhere. I appreciate, I really, I think that. But I just, I guess, when I look at things, I like to look at the whole picture. And I just don't like to look at phases. But I mean, if the whole council pleasure is to do that, I mean, I'll definitely, I want to fully participate. And at the end of the day, I think we all want to figure out which zones, or which ordinances or frontage issues we want to solve, and I think that we could work together.
Okay, I have a comment, and then I'm going to go to you. And it's very brief. And that comment is, you know, I tend to either want, all right, I don't want to continue it, I don't want to table it. We have a staff recommendation before us to adopt a resolution. That resolution fails, or it doesn't. That's my inclination.
Councilmember Clapp?
About your comments about zoning, I think the discovery will help teach, help us learn what the zoning changes we need to make are. If we make the zoning changes before the discovery, it could be backwards. Am I correct with that, Mr. Sargent? Could you step forward and address that?
Zoning is a tool, like, like a chisel or a hammer. And the question is, what are you going to make with it? And so we were proposing to focus on what you want to make. And after you know that, you'll know whether to pick up a file, or a chainsaw, or a hammer.
Or change setbacks, or height standards, or things like that.
Correct. Right. The vision needs, the, the problem with your zoning now is that, and most communities' zoning, is that the way you got it is you Xeroxed the zoning from some other town and changed the name of the town. And then you're wondering why everything looks the same. You need to start with, what are we trying to make here? Well, we're trying to make more Ojai, one little piece at a time. Well, what is that? Well, so, the proposal we've given you is an approach which we think will help you answer that question, neighborhood by neighborhood.
And Kathleen, did you want to add anything to that?
Well, I just think that, you know, I've been here almost a year now, and I think it's my impression of Ojai is that people like to participate. I know we might not get a lot of people, but I think the worst thing you could do is move through zoning changes without really knowing what the input from the public is. We heard tonight, and I've just been here since six o'clock, and I've heard some people stand up and say, "I want no more design review, don't burden me with any more." And I've heard people say, "But I want design review on fencing." You've heard both sides, just in this small, little, you know, last two hours.
You always want design review on the other guy's property.
Right, exactly. So I really think it works better to reach out to the public and find out what they want for Ojai, and not for staff to take that on, you know, as a professional, and then try to sell it to the public, but really work from ground up. I really think it's really important here.
Councilmember Clapp, did I ask, did you have a question that you wanted?
No, that was just a comment I wanted to make, that I felt that the zoning would have been the cart before the horse, that we need to have the workshops first.
Okay. Though what, there's two things that I have to say. The first one is, I want to make sure that what we are expecting to get for our fifty thousand dollar investment is what we get. That's the first thing, okay? I am, I am satisfied that the expertise that Mr. Sargent brings forward is there to do what he says he's going to do. The other thing, even though we didn't have all the planning commissioners' comments, as I'm sitting here reflecting on what I think needs to be done, we did have a fairly good comment from Kathy Nolan, who, to me, is one of the instrumental people in terms of what this type of a, what this type of a project is going to be in with the Complete Streets Committee. And I felt as though she was very favorably impressed with, with what the presentation was, and impressed enough that she wanted to assist in any way that, that we could. So that, that is a comment from the planning commission, as I'm, I'm thinking about it. The other thing is, is that there weren't any real negative, there wasn't anything really negative said by any of the, the planning commissioners, in terms of something that they really felt was, was problematic to them. And the, I had an opportunity after the thing to stop, that I will share with the council, and it's not in violation of the Brown Act, that the three of the commissioners came up and said that they couldn't stay. And I simply said, "Are you, were you favorably impressed by it?" And they said, "Yes." I don't, I don't know anything about any, whether he-
John Merck made a comment that he was, he was pleased with the presentation as well, and was, yeah.
So, I'm not in a position, I'll make a motion, but if somebody's going to entertain a motion-
Do you know the motion I have in mind? Is there any other comments, councils?
Yeah, and I would just refer to my concerns to the timeline. I just want to make sure, again, that it's flexible, and that we give the discovery phase a good amount of time, if, whatever it takes. And that was only my constraint, and I didn't want to put the cart before the horse, kind of deal with, with going right to zoning. And then, the other concern was also, in the, in the application, there was language in there that says that when you take all this, what we're going to call discovery phase, and then we're going to take it back to D P Z, and then we're going to work together to develop standards and, and guidelines, and invite staff. I just have, I just don't want to, again, get ahead of ourselves without allowing enough discovery time to this neighborhood planning. And again, that's where my concerns come before, but again, I think you presented really well, and you've given the flexibility, and I really commend you for that. And I just want to make sure that we are focused on the right work, in my-
All the delivers, all the deliverables will be made by me and my staff, with inputs and, and collaboration from the other team members on this. So we will be in complete control of what is delivered to you, and the proposal is that it would be of, the, the, the high-level framework for the character and scale and pattern of all the neighborhoods, and then focused with a useful deliverable that you could immediately start using to assess the appropriateness of walls and fences. And if it turns out there's something in addition to walls and fences that should be focused on, we can certainly add that.
Madam Mayor, the other thing that I'd like to point out, in, in terms of clarifying my position about the planning commission, the planning commission is, is not part of this decision-making process tonight. They're purely advisory. However, they perform a very important function within our city, and one that we pay attention to as being on the council. But I'm not trying to, in any way, shape, or form, make it seem as though they have to be part of this decision. I'm not saying that. The five of us have to make the decision, not the planning commission. And I, and I wouldn't be swayed, even if a majority of the planning commissioners said yes or no, I just want their, I would, I just like their feedback.
Madam Mayor, I was pleased to hear, Councilwoman Blatts, that you did speak, though, with some councilmen who said that they would favor it, because I did not. So that gives me a little bit more assurance. I cannot tell you how much we value our planning commissioners and the time they put in for no pay whatsoever, and no health care benefits, and they work very hard for the city and the valley that they love. So I do value their input. But with what you said, I'm a little more sure that we can go ahead with this, without necessarily having Mr. Sargent present to the planning commission.
Madam Mayor, with that note, I'm prepared to make a motion. Hope, you got a public comment?
Mr. Miley would like to have a point of order raised. Now, Mr. Miley has already spoken three minutes, so I'm really interested in this point of order. Come on out.
Madam Mayor, I would like to be able to speak again, and my justification is that the contract representative made his major presentation, and then you have allowed him to come back and add additional information to the discussion, which I have heard, and I now feel that I have a new point of view, and so I request that I have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, you're using up your three minutes. Go.
Go.
So you say yes?
You've been, you're on the clock.
Okay. The second question I asked the council was that I would hope that they would find and know the amount of staff time that they are obligating by approving this contract, as well as subsequent contracts, before you vote on it. My opinion now is, I understand you have lost a planner as of last week, and I think you should know the workload, and what is, what will happen to other duties that the current planning staff is fulfilling, when this new responsibility. So I would hope you would ask that and find that before you vote. Thank you.
Any more comments?
Madam Mayor, I think that's a fair question. I think it was answered partially during our earlier presentation, but I'd like to have a comment by Mr. Clark on it.
Thank you. First of all, there, there is a fairly defined scope of work for staff on page eighteen of the proposal, and it's a healthy amount of work. It's kind of grunt work, in a way, in support of the team. And this is a significant project. So we have a number of significant projects that we anticipated during the course of the year, and this is one of them. And so I do expect us to dedicate a lot of time to it. It's also true that our part-time planner, Heather Walstein, has resigned, and that we are going through recruitment to replace her, and in the interim, we'll use consulting services to carry the load that she was carrying. So the, the resources that we have are the same.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional service contract between the City of Ojai and Sergeant Town Planning, Inc., to provide the services as outlined in the Ojai Neighborhood Planning Process Phase One, proposal dated August twenty-second, 2014.
I will second that.
Roll call.
Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. Item number two.
Okay.
And item number two is a public hearing, E.J. Harrison and Sons franchise agreement. Mr. Clark, do you have the, or, oh, Mr. Grant?
Thank you.
Welcome back, Mr. Grant.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a public hearing to receive the input and consider a solid waste franchise agreement with E.J. Harrison and Sons. Over a year ago, staff and city consultants began working on this franchise agreement. There was two milestones with the city council during that period of time. December tenth, 2013, at a council meeting, we discussed in the reasons to extend, on a short-term basis, the Harrison contract. Primarily, that reason was the county agreement was expiring in March of 2014, and we thought we'd see what they're doing, since that's the majority of the Ojai Valley. And, and as a side note, they did extend that contract, they, they did renew a separate franchise agreement for long term. I think that's a ten-year agreement with two five-year extensions. We also considered options for the short term and longer term, what we might want to see in a franchise agreement. There was trash recycling pickup in the city downtown area, as well as the parks and facilities to help out the public works crew, to help reduce their workload. There's more frequent street sweeping in the fall time, there's a few complaints we get about, people like to see more frequent sweeping of leaves and so on. Street sweeper used to clean up the city parking lots was included. Encroachment permits for rental bins were included, that's always an issue with the city, to get proper encroachment permitting for bins that are used on the streets. Special event service, food waste recycling, GPS tracking of street sweepers to make sure we know how quickly they're proceeding on the streets, as well as assuring they get all the streets covered. And used battery pickup was discussed, and also new regulation compliance reporting, which is ongoing. Regulations are being added all the time from the state level. And also, we discussed whether negotiate a new long-term extension or advertise for any RFP at the time. On April eighth, 2014, we had a public hearing to review E.J. Harrison's, E.J. Harrison's performance, the whole contract performance, and we considered a long-term franchise agreement. The county had just approved that long-term agreement, so that was an influence on us. The performance review was completed by the Solid Waste Solutions, which is a consultant by the city for our solid waste needs, and that, that review showed compliance with all the provisions of the contract, which is extensive. I estimate it's about a sixty-five-page contract with all kinds of provisions in it. A few of those provisions included diversion requirements, there's AB nine thirty-nine is the older requirement, back from nineteen ninety, I believe, and that's the one that requires fifty percent diversion of all trash. The city is meeting that, we're about sixty-four percent right now. There's an AB three forty-one regulation that just came out in 2012, that requires commercial and multifamily dwelling, which would be condominiums and apartments to recycle as well. And so they've implemented that. There's CARB, the California Resources Board has certain requirements related to engine performance on diesel trucks, as well as greenhouse gas emissions. And we've reviewed Harrison's implementation of those requirements. Their community event participation, their, their food waste pilot program they have going in the city, their very low, very low complaint level they have on their contract and from the residents- and from the residents in the city, and their compliance with other multitude of requirements in that lengthy contract. It was all reviewed in this performance review. Also considered were the commitment of Gold Coast MRF, which is Materials Recycling Facility. Gold Coast is the only privately-held materials recycling facility in western, actually in Ventura County altogether in this region. So that's owned by Harrison. That's the facility that provides the recycling. All the curbside trash packer trucks go down to the MRF, have the recycling separated, and part of it goes to the landfill as trash or else to the recycling facilities. That facility is a major benefit to everyone in that it, it takes down these packer trucks, which carry a small amount of trash, kind of the two-to-five-ton range, and it puts it in very large semi-trucks that haul to the landfill and haul to the recycling centers. They haul more like twenty-two tons in these big semis. So you're reducing pollution and traffic when you go through a transfer station. There is also, they're very proactive. We considered that time their proactive approach to not only the recycling in the MRF, but they have green waste facilities permitted in, in operation throughout the county. In fact, they're the, they're primary, they're the only primary green waste operations within the county. In fact, even CME and some of the private operators were hauling to their facility for processing. And also considered were their longstanding, I think it'll be fifty years, I understand, in a couple of months, their, their franchise and other operational agreements with the city. So they've been operating for nearly fifty years within the city. The initial thoughts on the new franchise agreement were, there was discussions about what we might be able to add to that agreement to improve it for the future. We looked at assuring that the new mandated diversion rates from the state, which they're requiring, their goal is for seventy-five percent reduction by the year two thousand and twenty, with discussion that that'll be a requirement soon. Food waste recycling is on the horizon, and green waste diversion is, there's certain requirements which were just passed, which do not allow green waste to go to landfills anymore. So that's being implemented and phased in over the next few years, and that'll be a hardship on a lot of people that don't have green waste operations. So other considerations were further, further reduction of green, of, I'm sorry, the, the greenhouse gas emissions through the AB thirty-two goals, the collection of the waste throughout the city and the parks, more frequent sweeping, and some of the things that we put in the short-term agreement up above, GPS tracking, used battery pickup, assuring that the new regulations are complied with. At that time, this is back still at April eighth, two thousand and fourteen, the council directed staff to extend the agreement with Harrison on the short-term to allow negotiations for a long-term agreement. And that's what, at this point, I'll turn it over to Kim Nielsen. She's our consultant from Solid Waste Solutions, the city's consultant, who's been hired to go through this negotiation process with the city, and she'll present the, the terms of the new agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Kimberly Nelson. I own a company called Solid Waste Solutions. We have worked for your city since two thousand and seven, helping you design and stay very current and very progressive with your solid waste program. We do have a PowerPoint. I'm not quite sure I'd make it start.
So the technician would have to turn on. Well, the one in front.
There we go. So tonight, we're here to discuss the new agreement, the seventy-some-page agreement with the fees and all of that in it. We have been working on this feverishly since December with the meetings that were just explained by Mr. Grant. He sold like half my glory of everything that was in here because we've, it's, he's just done a great job. Staff has coordinated the extensions and, and done a great job. And so in December, Mr. Grant brought to you a short-term contract extension. And the reason he did that was the contract was due to expire in June, and we were waiting for the county to do their contracts to see what vendors they would give their contracts to. All the contracts went to the same players. We are completely surrounded by Harrison jurisdiction, county areas. So that was brought to you. You then directed staff to prepare a performance degree, review of your existing agreement. So at the April eighth meeting, we brought to you the performance review, and that reviewed the entire length of the contract that started in two thousand and four. And then you gave us the ability to extend the contract through December thirty-first of this year. So staff was then directed to negotiate the new agreement for a ten-year agreement. The California Public Resources Code gives the city the authority to provide solid waste services as it's a health and safety issue, and also to either by non-exclusive or exclusive franchise to license who you want to service your community. You do not have to go out for competitive bidding. You can, you do have the authority to renegotiate. So these are some of the items we looked at with request for proposal or negotiate. And this was all presented, Mr. Grant explained most of these already. But Harrison has been the only company in Ventura County with a material recovery facility. The other MRF is owned by the City of Oxnard, and it's now run by the City of Oxnard in the entire area. It's a progressive MRF. It's a great tour. If you have children to go, they give great tours as well. It shows how they take a load of trash, sort it, and get everything processed. It's amazing, absolutely amazing. They're very progressive in what they do. Harrison as a franchisee for your jurisdiction has been above fifty percent probably for the entire time I've been here, so at least for the last seven years. They're at sixty-four percent, and that's with two thousand and thirteen numbers as reported to the state of California. They're in compliance with the Air Resources Board, and they're working toward having all LNG vehicles, which are great because they're much quieter. But remember, collecting trash is not necessarily always quiet because it still has to get dumped into the truck. So you can have a super-quiet truck. He picks up a three-yard bin. It's not super-quiet when it dumps it in. So they're endeavoring to teach their drivers how to get these things as quiet as possible, but there's still noise involved with trash service, no matter what you do. They're in compliance, Harrison is in compliance with all the state requirements, and as Mr. Grant said, has been serving your community since nineteen sixty-five. They will have a fiftieth anniversary, they told us, in January. They're proactive in their solid waste programs. They have a pilot food waste program operating in your jurisdiction right now. And as soon as they get the permits to install a food digester, which will allow them to process more food waste and compost, then they'll be able to expand their program to the next level. And just as an aside, an RFP process takes a long time. It typically takes between nine and twelve months to do, and the average cost of that can be upwards of sixty thousand dollars to get that done. It's a, it's a definitely a long process. And if you got a vendor that was not a local vendor, you'd have to give them three to four months to get situated up in Ojai, to have places, to park trucks, for equipment. So the process then grows from that nine to twelve months, another three or four months. So what we're here for tonight is to discuss the franchise agreement. This franchise agreement will cover trash, recyclables, green waste, food waste, and construction demolition. Construction demolition is super-important because of the weight of it. It really helps our diversion. And green waste, you guys are a pretty green city. There's a lot of green waste that comes out of your jurisdiction. So it's very important for us to have a proactive partner relative to green waste. This is for residential, multifamily, and commercial. And then this construction demolition, we call roll-off. So it covers that as well. The contract as presented to you tonight for review is a ten-year initial term. It has two five-year extensions at the end that are done based on a performance review, and then a final extension based on mutual agreement between the city and also the hauler. Performance can, reviews can be done one every five years and paid for by the contractor. Or if you have issues that have come up, the city can do a performance review as needed. But once every five years, if you want the contractor to pay for it. The key provisions of our contract that we've added that are different than what you have right now is your second residential recycling cart is free. The main reason to do this is because right now you have every other week recycling. You have recycling one week, you have green waste the next, and it just goes on and back and forth. If you tried to get those to be weekly services, then you'd have that much more truck traffic out there. You'd have three trucks a week instead of two trucks a week. It doesn't help you in complying with AB thirty-two, the greenhouse gas emissions reductions, et cetera. So by giving a, a free recycle cart, you're enabling people to recycle more, divert more, and we're keeping trucks off the street, which is a great thing to do. And then they've lowered the cost of an additional green waste cart to only five dollars, which is awesome. Included in this contract, as was in your extension, are the services like the collection of the local containers. Any of the trash containers at the parks on the main street are in here. And they're not deemed as a weekly basis, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Monday, Friday. They're deemed to not be overflowing. So Harrison has promised the city that they will keep this from happening, and they will work with the city to do that. We're going to have mulch giveaways a couple of times a year. We have holiday tree collection. We have excess packaging collection, which is really cool if you have children and they get a whole bunch of things from Santa, and now you have all these boxes to recycle. Because now you can put them on side of your, of your trash bin and recycle bin, and they'll be taken away your first service after the holiday, which is very awesome. We have household battery collection, bulky item collection, which you currently have, collection at city facilities. They will assist with city cleanups if you do a creek cleanup or anything like that. They will work with us on that. City-sponsored events, and also they're helping with the maintenance of the road costs for the, because they have equipment parked in the public maintenance, Public Works Maintenance Yard. In addition to that, there's a key provision that's in your contract. It is the competitive rate guarantee. And what that does is anytime your rate is looked at, it has to be comparable to the surrounding rates. You can't suddenly have an exorbitantly higher rate than your local jurisdictions and local county areas. So that is a really great thing to have in your agreement. You also have diversion requirements. You have to meet the state nine thirty-nine requirement of fifty percent. Your contract requires Harrison to work to seventy-five percent by two thousand and twenty, which is a state-mandated diversion, not a city, but we want them to be there too. And also, a zero-waste goal for the future because every agency is looking for zero waste. We want to reduce our footprint on the future. That's a little hard to see. So the rate comparison that is included in your agenda packet is off. The incorporated area rates were lower than they actually are. We got them verified after your packet was sent out, and we apologize for that. So as you can see, the multifamily and commercial rates are very close to what our rates are that we just got from Harrison, but those rates that are shown up there do not include the recycling containers. The proposed rates that we're looking at for residential goes from twenty-nine forty-three to thirty-one forty-nine. And if you look at all the rates presented in the agreement, it's approximately a seven percent increase across the board. E.J. Harrison has not had a rate increase since two thousand and ten. The last CPI was two thousand and nine, and then there was a landfill pass-through in two thousand and ten. If you look at the CPI from two thousand and nine to the present, it's at eight-point-five-six percent. So our increase to this two thousand and fifteen rate is under that at seven percent. So if they would have done a CPI every year, our rates would be even higher. So we are here to present to you this franchise agreement, and the staff recommendation in the packet you have is first to make findings, sequoia findings, I'm an engineer, I have problems with sequoia, sequoia findings of an exemption and direct the city manager to file a notice of exemption, and introduce an ordinance approving the new ten-year franchise agreement with E.J. Harrison effective January ninth, two thousand and fifteen, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement. And I thank you all for your time.
Thanks. I just wanted to approach a couple additional items, and one of them was the CPI that Kim just mentioned, that the last time that E.J. Harrison had a CPI increase was two thousand and nine. So to date, that would be the CPI calculation of eight-and-a-half percent. But the contract does not allow for any CPI increase for the first two years either. So whatever that assumption would be for the next two years, if you assume two percent per year, is that reasonable? That's another four on top of the eight-point-five. So about twelve-point-five percent before they can receive another CPI. I think when you compare that to the seven percent that they have negotiated for an increase, that's a, staff felt that was a good negotiation, was reasonable, if they're not getting the full CPI to date. I did want to just mention that we've had outreach to the community, and we did receive comments, so I wanted to address a few of those. One, number one was that why don't we recycle styrofoam plastic bags and palm fronds? We've discussed that with Harrison in nearby adjacent cities. And the issue with styrofoam is that it's so darn light that it has to be collected at the MRF, and then there's no regional recycling facilities for styrofoams. You'd have to pack a big semi-truck, and depending on the type of styrofoam, you might get a ton or two in an entire styro, entire semi-truck and haul it down to LA where there's recycling facilities. It is possible. I mean, if it's important, we could request Harrison, they would have to look extensively into building their own styrofoam recycling or working with a contractor. It's really not practical, so that's the reason why that is not done in Ventura County area. It's too far from recycling facilities. The other one was palm fronds, and they have, with upgrades in the grinders, they're doing a lot better with palm fronds, but you're probably aware that palm fronds in Yucca are so stringy, that material, it's very difficult to grind it, so they can jam grinders. But the new ones are doing very well, so they actually are pulling palm fronds from the no section of what's allowable in the green waste cans. And then there was a question about plastic bags as well, and they're a real issue for everybody. I know the city banned them, which is a great proactive approach at the source, but it's very difficult once they get in the waste stream. It's pretty good for vans and so on to recycle plastic bags because they might have a clean source and they can do it. But to get it in the recycling can and try to keep it clean, and there's so many different plastic types to have them sorted at a MRF and so on, it turns out to be just extremely difficult and infeasible to do that. There are some people that are able to collect that real-low-volume material and make them into things like curbs and a couple simple plastics that can be mixed together. But generally, it's not very feasible, and it's a very low amount of weight of the stream trying to keep out of landfill. So generally, it's just not feasible. But we could ask for a cost from Harrison if that was an important feature, just as on any of these. There's also questions about converting the fleet to natural gas to reduced emissions, and they're already well on their way to converting their fleet right now, I believe, is somewhere between a third to a half converted to LNG, and they're in the process of buying more trucks. Every time a truck comes out of circulation from age, they replace it with an LNG, or they're looking at CNG trucks as well, compressed natural gas or liquefied natural gas. And I should mention that trash trucks are recognized to be, the curbside trash trucks are recognized to be the highest polluter in a community because they stop at every fifty-foot or so, every single property, to dump a trash can, and then they cycle the engine a second time to dump that container in. So it's terrific that they're using this LNG, CNG-type fuels. There's also a question about weekly pickup of recycling and green waste, and I think Kim had addressed that. That would require another full route of truck every week, and the, the better approach that we've negotiated with them is to have a free additional recycling can available or a five-dollar green waste if you want that. That reduces pollution and traffic on our streets. The question came up as well about periodic performance reviews. Right now, the contract provides for every five years for the contractor to have a full performance review, including a rate review that's paid for by the contractor, up to twenty-five thousand dollars by a consultant chosen by the city, a third-party consultant. But still, that doesn't preclude us in any way from doing annual reviews, which the count, the city always does to a certain degree, and we can go on to the, to any extent requested, we can always do annual reviews. And that still doesn't, if there's any issues or default within the contract, that's always a default, and we're able to terminate the contract. There's a remedy procedure to go through so that you have proper notification and so on. But there's always several ways to assure the performance is good. It's not, I think someone indicated it only occurs every ten years or so. It's really ongoing at the city's sole option and, but paid for by the contract every five years. And then another question was modifying, does the contract allow to modify the terms in unforeseen circumstances? And we have provisions in the contract which provide for a meet-and-confer process, which in our experience, Harrison's always been very amenable to any changes with the contract. really ongoing at the city's sole option, but paid for by the contractor every five years. And then, another question was modifying, does the contract allow to modify the terms in unforeseen circumstances? And we have provisions in the contract which provide for a meet-and-confer process, which, in our experience, Harrison's always been very amenable to any changes with the contract, as we request. And in the past 10 years, I'm aware of, 2012, while I've been here, the AB 341 regulation came out requiring commercial and multifamily dwelling recycling mandate. They implemented that at no cost. They've implemented a food composting pilot program at no cost to the city, a battery recycling program at no cost to the city, and a street sweeping program was beyond the threshold of no cost. There was an addendum for a change in cost for that. And lastly, there was some questioning why we don't request proposals from other firms, and I think that's been touched upon throughout this, but essentially, the western half of Ventura County all has franchise agreements with Harrison. And that, several have just been renewed. I believe that's in a letter. I don't believe we just touched on that, but I think it was Camarillo, the county unincorporated areas, Carpinteria just renewed theirs. These are all long-term agreements, 10 years with a couple five-year options on them. And I think those are the primary ones. I know the city of Ventura is about ready to start theirs, and Fillmore as well. They've been a competent proactive firm and well-priced in competition with the other rates set in the area, and they meet all city and state mandates. And I should mention, that's a significant cooperative effort the city has to have with the franchisee to assure they're looking out for these new mandates as they come up and they're being implemented. And I think they show that, for instance, they've been in the process, I believe, for probably, probably I would guess, three years now. They've purchased food digesters, and it's been an extensive process to permit those. And those will allow for large-scale food processing, but they've had some difficulties getting those permitted. In the meanwhile, they've been doing the pilot program where they mix the food waste with the compost, and that's been successful, and they've learned a lot with that program. I believe that Bill Camarillo from Aggrumon will be talking about that. And, at this point, we've spent about a year, I'm sorry, we started in the fall of 2013 pulling this all together, and I think, as Kim mentioned, the RFP process would take about roughly $60,000 in additional cost, and take nine to 12 months to complete, if we went that route. So, that's the end of the presentation, if there's any questions.
Madam Mayor?
To understand, the palm fronds, you said that the new grinders are processing them
fairly well now, fairly good. And you mentioned that they might pull that item from the green waste, or could you clarify that part?
I was really talking that there's a flyer that comes out periodically with a bill, and it shows what's recyclable and what's not. And it usually says no for palm fronds and yucca, and so that'll be pulled from that section. It's now they're allowing it to be processed. It's not jamming the newer grinders as much as it used to. Obviously, if they still get a major pile, I think their policy is if you come down with a truckload as a contractor and dump a huge pile of it, I think they have a special charge for it, because it's hard for the grinders. But as this mixed with your average green load waste, it's okay to process it through green waste containers now.
Just because it's a rule, I mean, we don't, we're not supposed to put them on green waste, just so that I clarify that. Thanks.
So it's okay from now on?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Yeah, great news.
Any other questions, council? Okay, this is a public hearing. My first card is Bill Barrett.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and guests. My name is Bill Barrett, and I live on the Tico Road outside the city limits. I am the president of Venco Power Sweeping, and we're the current street sweeping contractor working under the Harrison contract. We've also swept the streets of Ojai in the past for you for several years, and we work with other trash haulers in other communities, and we also work with EJ Harrison in other communities as well. We at Venco Power Sweeping are a part of your community and have been for years. On a personal note, my parents moved to this community in 1948 with three small children, and proceeded to populate the valley with about 12 more children. So there are several Barretts running around this town.
Oh, many, many.
And on this Veterans Day, I'd just give a shout-out to our veterans. My father was one, and also my son is serving in the Air Force tonight in England. But like EJ Harrison, we're a family business with family values, and we recommend that you continue to keep this important relationship ongoing. They provide an outstanding service and do an excellent job. I'm here tonight in a simple way to encourage your continued support to their wonderful work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Harrison?
Is it possible that Bill talk first?
Okay, Bill. Give us your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Bill Camarillo, and I'm the CEO of Aggrumon. I live in Camarillo, California, and we have been managing organic waste in Ventura County for 22 years now, and have become recognized as one of the leaders in the state at managing the material outside the landfills. And like many of the legislative bills that were addressed earlier, AB 939, 32, 341, they just go on and on. There's three more. The governor this year signed three more bills that now eliminate the diversion credit for alternative daily cover, green waste, alternative daily cover in landfills. They also passed another bill, Assembly Bill 1826, which mandatory, causes mandatory organics recycling for commercial, which is primarily all food waste. And if you didn't know it, in the state of California, it's estimated about 6 million tons of food waste are generated annually, which is about 300 pounds per person. So if you just look at the city of Ojai and then the surrounding cities, it's a considerable amount of food waste that has not yet been collected, that we're going to have to figure out how to manage with newer technologies. The final bill, which is kind of a sleeper bill, is Assembly, it's actually Senate Bill 605, which is a methane gas bill, and they're going to quantify that methane is now 85 times more potent than CO2. And that methane generated from landfills is caused by food waste and green waste. And in next year's scoping plan for AB 32, the elimination of organics from landfills could happen as early as 2016. So what does all that mean? The Harrisons have been very forward-thinking in preparation to meet the mandates of what they call a zero-waste in our future, and part of that, organic waste represents 40% of the waste stream. So if we're at 64% today, in order for us to get to 75, 80, and 90, we're going to have to extract the organic waste stream. And that's going to require newer technologies, more in-depth permits. We've been in the permitting process with the county now for two years to get the digester installed. The digester will take the food waste, create methane gas, and we're going to put it back in the collection trucks as compressed natural gas. So not only will we have a clean burning truck, we'll actually have a truck running on negative carbon fuel. So, a lot of things are going on in the background, and we can't do it sustainably without the support of the cities and the agreements that the cities provide the contractors, like the Harrisons, in conjunction with the other cities in the county, as we try to work these facilities in the county and get them permitted. Just like there's only one or two landfills, there's only going to be one or two compost centers in the county to manage the entire waste stream, and the Harrisons are aggressively with Aggrumon, seeking those permits to be able to manage this waste stream outside the landfills. And we're pretty excited about it. Aggrumon makes over 200 different types of products out of those waste streams, and they end up back right here in your community, and we're happy to support and continue our support of the city of Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, would you like to speak now?
Yeah, can you speak, please?
Jim Harrison. You know, the business is very exciting, and we're dedicated to making the future better, and we're really excited about it. And there's a lot to talk about, so I'll try to keep it short. You know, we started collecting here in 1965, when I was young, and I was the driver. And there's a lot of changes. We had steel barrels, we had twice-a-week service, the whole city, and of course, no recycling. And it was a long ways to the dump, and it was really exciting. I was really fortunate to have that life. There's been a lot of changes. Some of the things I'd like to point out, though, is, you know, you've had floods up here, you've had the big storms in '69, and you had, our trucks had been kept up here all night because they couldn't get down the highway, fade the motels, you know? They always find a way to get everything done. I think, one of the things, there's been a lot said today, but one of the things that we did was, our fleet was in early compliance with state airborne requirements. I mean, we've been in compliance for a long, long time. It's a long-range plan. It continues. We are right now in the process of bringing, you're going to use line gas to produce our own fuel at our yard. That'll save trucks bringing the fuel to our yard. So everything that we do is to try to make things better, reduce our carbon output, all those kinds of things. One of the things you have to realize in Ojai here is, Ojai is the furthest city from any landfill processing center, and you have a very heavy waste stream. A lot of people would think you wouldn't, but you have one of the highest waste streams, and that means total recyclables, green waste, and trash of any community in the whole county. You have the most people in this town on minimum service. That means a little small barrel. You have the highest percentage of any community that we serve in Ojai, but you still have an enormously large waste stream. So that means some people have a lot of stuff. I think green waste, Ojai has, my number's here, almost 30 pounds a week per house, which is a very big number. In fact, of all the communities, only one city has more, the Thousand Oaks. So Ojai has 29, almost 30 pounds a week of green waste.
Jim, would you, there you go.
Yeah, okay. And I think that you need to realize that your recycling is really good. You have a lot of trash. So, the rates that we charge is really, really fair for what we're offering. I think there's a lot of things going to happen. I think that Bill had just talked about the management of organic. It's a very, very serious matter. And we've already spent a lot of the money to comply with us. And when it does occur, we will be in compliance with the new requirements. I have a lot to say, but a lot of other people are going to speak. The contract negotiation was really lengthy and is really complete. I don't think there's a thing in the contract that you wanted that you don't, are getting. And so I'm here to ask any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions from council?
Why do we have so much trash?
We're recycling.
You have a big waste stream in this town. Waste stream is a combination of all the, you know, the recyclables and the waste.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question. Is the fact that we have a lot of green, or a lot of trash, is that why we're at 64% of diversion versus some city being at 70 already? Because that bothers me. I feel like we're, we push the envelope, and we're trying, is that something, is there something better that we could do to help out?
I think the towns that have a larger commercial waste stream, it's a little easier to get high numbers in those communities than it is when you have all residential. In your town, your density is pretty low, you know, per house. But your green waste produced in this town, I just mentioned, was 29 pounds a week. That's a lot. That's more than a lot in most cities. Your recycling rate is really good here, realizing the density of the homes is not that high.
I'm a landscape contractor, and I do a lot of maintenance, so I do know we fill up those green barrels fairly quickly.
Appreciate your business. Thank you very much.
Questions? Thank you. Deborah Pendrey?
Thank you, Mayor Strobel. Council members, my name's Deborah Pendrey, 309 Riverside Road, Oakview, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. The Green Coalition is in support of the contract as written. I read all of their newsletters, my bill inserts. I have regular communications with Nan Drake, who does their public outreach, also Peter, who runs the recycling department. We coordinate three events a year with the Harrisons. So, from my knowledge of them personally, they are constantly working on improving infrastructure. They are completely proactive versus reactive. They are highly mandated by the state of California to reach high standards, and they're always ahead of the curve. And, you know, in April, I shared their community involvement. We all know that. It's great. The January e-waste event that they sponsor with us and work with us on, just so you know, if I hadn't mentioned before, the city gets credit for that. So, yeah, they're a great company. I think they do great things for our community. The idea that they, not going out for other bids, you know, none of us like the idea of a private monopoly-type thing, you know, thought, but there are times when it's appropriate, it's more efficient, it's more economical, it has less environmental impact, and I think this is one of those situations. So, we hope that you will vote to approve this contract. And, you know, the whole infrastructure thing is a process, and it takes a huge amount of capital, and I've never seen them want to do anything but make improvements and stay progressive. And the Green Coalition loves EJ Harrison, and I love Jim Harrison. He's really cool to talk to. Thank you.
Larry Melendez?
Red Sox fan. All right.
Actually, this is my kid's Little League team. Not a big fan. I'm a Yankees fan, so it kills me to put it on. My name's Laurie Melendez, 9622 Old Creek Road. I'm here representing the Ojai Valley Little League. I just wanted to let you know that EJ Harrison has been a sponsor of our league for the past six years with their donations. We've been able to purchase new equipment, maintain our fields, but most importantly of all is to provide the scholarships to the kids in our community whose families have fallen on financial hardships. It gives them a chance to participate in Little League baseball. And to see these kids out there playing every day is just amazing and fun to watch. Another thing that EJ Harrison has provided to our league is that, well, on my part, is that they provided me with a flexible schedule. And with that flexible schedule, I'm able to attend the board meetings, managers' meetings, but also get the opportunity to coach my two youngest sons. And without their willingness to, to help me with my schedule, I'd be missing out on that opportunity. Every year, Ralph Harrison will come to me and ask, as the start of baseball season, he will come to me and ask me if, if the company has gotten their sponsorship in yet, and I always tell him yes. And, you know, EJ Harrison, if it's important to the community, then it's important to them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Quilisi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Let me start by saying I have nothing bad to say about EJ Harrison. That said, I oppose in principle signing this contract for 10 to 25 years with no competition. And I say that as a member of the aerospace business, where I have always competed for every bit of business that I've ever had in the last 40 years. EJ Harrison is a good, maybe even an excellent, company. I wouldn't dispute that in the least. They support the community, lots of good things. My only argument with them is they don't recycle styrofoam, but I think because styrofoam is mostly air, you could crush it, and you don't have to take two tons per semi-load somewhere. But they are excellent. The question is, are they the best deal for the community? I don't know, and I contend you don't know, because you haven't asked anyone else to do this. There was discussion of the time that it would take to prepare an RFP. I think it is comparable to the amount of time that your city staff and consultant have spent already putting together the provisions of this franchise agreement. And most of what's in there would be the basis for an RFP that you could go out to other companies and get and get bids. There was a discussion of Harrison having the only private material recycling facility, but there is one in Oxnard. Has anyone investigated whether some other company would like to discuss with Oxnard, and for that matter, with Agramin for diversion of those types of solid waste and give you a different bid? Over in East County, there are people, I heard tonight, there are already people hauling to the E.J. Harrison green waste facility. I presume that that would be open to any other company at whatever rate E.J. Harrison wants to negotiate with them to provide that service. Once again, they're an excellent company. Are they the best? I don't know, and I contend you don't know. And I think until you do, you shouldn't be approving a ten-to-twenty-five-year commitment to a private company. Thank you.
Bill Miley?
I like Harrison, Bill Miley. I like Harrison. I've liked them since nineteen sixty-eight. I have no complaints. But I would like to just comment on the styrofoam issue. Steve, being an engineer, just casually commented to you that styrofoam can be crushed. And in preparation for my comments last night, I looked on the web, and the Dart Corporation, which is a very large corporation, has equipment where you can take relatively inexpensively, I believe, which becomes a crusher, and it crushes it down from this to this. So I went and searched on Google just now, and the League of California Cities has a website, and the title is Foam Curbside Recycling Programs in California Communities, December two thousand and twelve. Did you know that over sixty-five California communities can recycle foam in their curbside recycling bins? And they go on, and somewhere they list the cities, they appear mostly in Southern California. But there are also recycling centers, nonprofit groups. I ran across one in Palo Alto where two of my family members live, and my son-in-law and daughter bought a huge table, and there was a yard full, practically a front yard full of styrofoam, big sheets, and it was all going to go into the landfill. So I called around and found a nonprofit in Menlo Park, and we hauled it over there, and for twenty dollars, they crushed it. And they said they turned it, they have a heating unit that actually puts it into really tight knots, and then they cut it up, and it gets recycled and used again. So possibly, we could encourage Harrison and maybe others, the consultant corporation, to see if we could get a recycling center started where we could, people could take their recycling and provide it, I mean, take it there, and it would be crushed rather than putting it in the landfill. It's just, it's sad and a crime, and I don't know what to do with it. I keep it for art projects, but I've got too much of it already. So maybe we can get a recycling center going. Thank you.
Ann Wagner?
Oh, my, hi, Ann. Hi. I'm Anna Wagner. I'm with the Ojai Music Festival. Just wanted to read a quick letter in support of E.J. Harrison's franchise agreement. To the City Council of Ojai, I am writing to you in support of the franchise agreement between E.J. Harrison and Sons and the City of Ojai. For over fifteen years, E.J. Harrison and Sons has been an important partner for the Ojai Music Festival. They have been generous to us through sponsorship support and providing valuable in-kind services through the festival weekend each year. E.J. Harrison and Sons also played a significant role during a critical time of rebuilding Libby Bowl. Their leadership contribution and volunteer services helped us to leverage other major gifts and enabled us to reach our goal. We at the music festival are proud to be associated with the E.J. Harrison's and Sons and Company, who has demonstrated a strong and enduring commitment to the City of Ojai and Ventura County at large. Thanks.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to speak? Okay, seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to council.
I have a question. You mean by ten to twenty-five years, as far as the contract goes?
Twenty-five years if all the extensions are approved.
Oh, if all the extensions are approved, okay.
Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of comments to make, and I think that this is something that many times in this day and age, people don't look at. And I think it's really important that when we're looking at this contract and, and looking at a company that's done a good job for us for fifty years, and knowing that they have tried to be in the forefront of, of recycling, either green waste or, or other things, that this is a company that truly is part of a community. And it's not, most of the time when you hear all the arguments about corporations today, it's because the corporation has, has become disassociated with, with the, with the public. It's become disassociated with people that that corporation is serving, and they almost have become cold and hardened, it seems. Well, this is exactly the opposite, and I want to tell Mr. Harrison that those kinds of things don't go unnoticed, as far as I'm concerned. And the fact that you're providing time for the Little League, the fact that I see you at city functions, the, the fact that you're always there when somebody needs some help or something to be done, those are the kinds of things that, that's the kind of a company that I want the city to be associated with, and that's the kind of the company that I want to be associated with. And I think a lot of times, we lose sight of that, that there's a lot more to a corporation than a competitive bid. There's a lot more to a corporation than just whether they're going to recycle styrofoam today. There's a lot more to a corporation when you look at it, when you can say, you know, we know those people there, and they're really good people. Because so many times in this day and age, you look at it and you don't get that. You get just the opposite. And I want to thank you for being that way, and I want Harrison's to know that it's very much appreciated, and I'm much in favor of this contract.
Madam Mayor, a question for Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison, what is, what is the average length of time an employee stays in your employ?
It's a long time. I think that, you know, I'm sorry that I don't have it, but, you know, that book may have it in there, but the, the length of time that employees work for us is really a fantastically long number. People don't leave.
They don't leave.
We have, we give awards out. We have one this year.
Mr. Harrison?
Forty-five years.
Pull the mic down.
Forty-five years.
Thanks.
Lots of twenty-fives, lots of thirty-fives. Insurance company tells me that you just have a really unusually...
And I think you have backup.
I've, I've been with Harrison's for twenty-eight years.
Twenty-eight years. And you get benefits?
We can't run them off. We're trying to, we're trying to run them off. We don't like them because he's Italian.
Do you get benefits? You get medical insurance?
Well, right now, I'm on Medicare.
But you get medical insurance and paid vacation, and do you have a...
He's tried to cut my salary twice, but I...
And what about, like, retirement kind of programs? You have all of that.
401K.
401K. It's a great company to work for.
And truck drivers that give toy trucks to little autistic boys on the street.
I'm sorry I can't answer your question, but you know, the, the numbers that you're asking me, they're, when anyone sees how long people stay working for the company, it's a, it's a awful lot of people, been there twenty-five years, lots of them, because there's hundreds of them, you know? And we're really proud of that. I mean, it's pretty hard to run them off. They don't want to leave.
Well, that's what I've heard. That's what I wanted to ask you. I'd heard that people didn't leave. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Comments?
Madam Mayor, I, I just, I, I do have a comment. If anyone has opportunity to take the tour from E.J. Harrison, they have a fabulous facility, and I would highly encourage anyone that hasn't done it. I was highly encouraged last year by this council to do it, so I did it, and they do have this state-of-the-art facility, and they keep improving it. With that said, I also mirror the comments of Councilmember Blatts in terms of, of looking at this a little bit different. And I know that it's always good practice to do an RFP, especially for a private company, and I, I haven't, I do it constantly where I bid out, but it, I think that we also have to commend staff for really doing their homework and looking at other companies and seeing if, if the prices are very comparable, if they're fair, and they have done their homework in a way I feel like we've, we've eliminated a lot, all the extra time in putting RFP by our staff doing their homework. And that's why I feel also assured by this contract, and I think that Harrison does have the track record of working with communities. For example, if we really want to look at styrofoam or plastic, I think that is, we're a city that pushes the envelope. We put a ordinance to not allow certain type of styrofoam in this community. I think that they were, they'd be more than willing to, to help us out with that as technology advances. I mean, they, again, if you haven't taken the tour, they're really up on their technology, so I really commend you, and I, I also appreciate your hard work. The only thing that, I don't know if the staff tried to negotiate, was the, the fact that the YouTube video that came out with the truck driver getting the, the, the truck to the young kid. I don't know if we had any, any credit in that in the negotiations, but, for their marketing. But I, other than that, tremendous work, and, and I really commend you guys for, for your work.
Madam Mayor, I have done the tour many years ago. Nan Drake will hunt you down if you haven't, but anyway, I have no problem going ahead and being, they're much in favor of granting this contract to E.J. Harrison. They are a family company. They are Ventura County. I see no need to take it out to an RFP.
And everything that, that I would like to say about E.J. Harrison has already been said, so I'm not going to keep us here. And I really thought I had an ace in the hole, but Councilmember Laura did that one for me, and that was, and that was to suggest to Mr. Miley that he contact E.J. Harrison Service and see if there's what you can do to establish a styrofoam recycling. Because my experience of E.J. Harrison is if it's a good idea, they'll do it. They are local. They've done an exemplary job for the city for the twenty-four years I've been here. The one company I do not get calls about complaining is E.J. Harrison. So thank you for that. That's, that's all my comments. Council's pleasure.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to make sequel findings of exemption and direct city manager to file a notice of the exemption and introduce an ordinance approving a new ten-year franchise agreement with E.J. Harrison and Sons effective January nine, two thousand and fifteen, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
I'll second that.
Rule call?
An ordinance of the City of Ojai authorizing an agreement between the City of Ojai and E.J. Harrison and Sons for collection, diversion, and disposal of solid waste and establishment of maximum rates for said services. Blatts?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. Our next item is resolution updating core building codes. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, as we've discussed in the past, we're in the process of updating our fees to, in most cases, recover a hundred percent of the cost of providing service, and we've calculated with the core building fees that if our fee is approximately ninety-six percent of that charged by the county, that that would provide full-cost recovery. So that is the fee that we're recommending. I do have a couple of exceptions, and that is one that the City Council expressed an interest in creating an incentive for environmentally friendly...
Mr. Clark, hold on just a moment.
I will.
This is a trash company. What's all the people that can't... My husband says twenty-one people trash every week. He says, "I love the trash."
You'd think if we had to do it ourselves...
It's so cheap. It's a bucket aid.
I know.
A bucket aid that has to mail your trash away. It's so cheap. Take it back and take it for... We do have a lot of green waste. I mean, I can't tell you, in Terramina, our green waste, because people are trimming the garden, garden waste. It must be a clean rabbit farm. Quite amazing. I can try to compost a lot. You do? Oh, yeah. Well, you're very good about it, but I mean, I can't tell you... I have a green barrel. I do, the little one. Sometimes I don't take it out, but I'm like... No kidding. There's nothing in it. Well, you know, in Terramina, we have community trash, so we only pay like twenty-five bucks a month.
Excuse me for that interruption. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. I, I was just mentioning that the City Council had requested that we have an incentive for environmentally-friendly building projects. So in the, for the past year, we have waived a hundred percent of the fee for solar installations. We're changing and expanding that to a fifty percent fee reduction for a whole host of things, and as you know, we have three programs through which environmentally-friendly projects, which could include energy savings of all sorts, insulation, double-bayed windows, that kind of thing, and also water conservation. So any project that could be funded by one of those three programs, whether it is funded or not, this action would reduce that fee by fifty percent. And so it's a statement on behalf of the City Council to encourage that kind of development. The other thing is that there was a, I'd like to pass out a piece of paper. Someone pointed out a mathematical oddity.
I like that, a mathematical oddity.
Yeah, and I wanted to address it. So if you look at page four-dash-nine, there's a schedule that says total valuation in one column and then permit fee computation in the other column. And it, and what we did is we just took numbers that the county have in their, has in their schedule, multiplied them by ninety-six percent, and accepted them. But if you actually apply those numbers, in some case, the, the fee for it, for, for example, for a two-thousand-dollar valuation would be a little bit more than the fee for a two-thousand-and-one-dollar valuation. So that was pointed out to us. It's not a whole huge difference, but if you look in this column that I circled that says margin, and the first number is five-oh-nine, that corresponds with the five-oh-nine in the five-hundred-and-one to two-thousand valuation range. If you were to switch that to five-oh-seven and change, then that mathematical oddity would not occur. And I have no objection at all to switching it to that yellow column, if that's what you'd like to do.
Five-oh-seven-five-three-three-three?
Yes, and then if you go down the line, the other incremental numbers would change as well. This is really just addressing a rounding error, I think, but if it adds comfort, I'm glad to do it. So unless you have any questions, that would be the extent of my report.
Any questions from council to staff? Nope. I have one speaker card. Steve Kulisi?
My, my comments are now moot. Those were my suggestions. Thank you.
Okay. Bring it back to council. Sorry. Bring it back to council. Council's pleasure.
I just have one question, Mr. Clark. With the, with the standard fee schedule valuation tables and things that we've had it, that we have in our packet, we still have certain other incentive programs, don't we? Like the incentive program for one of the vacant buildings and things like that?
The, yeah, we, we, most of those are in a different set of fees, the development fees, and so we'll bring those back separately, but yes, we do.
Okay.
We, for, it's for appeals, for historical items, for vacant buildings, all of those things.
Okay.
Mr. Clark, if council should make a motion on this, should it be to adopt the resolution as amended?
That, yes.
Council, you have any questions? Further questions? Council's pleasure. Counsel's pleasure.
I'll move to approve the resolution as amended.
Second.
Rule call?
Blatts?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
All right. Will recess as the City Council convene as the Redevelopment Successor Agency? Consent calendar?
I move to approve.
Second.
Rule call?
Blatts?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Will adjourn as the successor agency reconvene as the City Council? Reports from council members? Okay. City managers' report?
Thank you, council. I just wanted to point out, in one of the consent calendar items, you approved a hearing loop. And that's a system that I've become aware of because of my membership in Rotary and the fact that most of those guys are pretty old and can't hear anything.[1531.16][1531.16][laughter]
Excuse me. Personal, so you can't hear anything.
No, we have younger women, but. They have this system in Soul Park, and what it does is it broadcasts what is spoken into the microphones in a way that it's picked up in a hearing aid. So all of the distracting background noise that makes it hard for people to hear goes away. And the other day I noticed at our Rotary Club, we had a speaker with just a booming voice. And he goes, "I don't need the mic, you know, I can talk loud enough." And everybody goes, "I have the loop."[1565.00][1565.00][laughter] So I think, I think this is going to be a good thing for public access to our meetings and for people to hear what you're saying and what we're saying at these meetings.
And the cost is nuts.
It was $3,000, $3,000. So I think it's a good investment.
And I will mention that we had a hearing impaired assistance equipment here, and it's only 40 years old. So, but I guess we've, we have our money out of that system. So I think it's wonderful that we're going to the loop. Any of our department heads have comments? Did Mr. Grant go away? I direct, they went home. Okay, fine.
I'd like to make a comment. So with the election period, we'll swear on the new two, three council members at December 9th, and we'll say our goodbyes to Mayor Protem Smith and Mayor Strobel. But I'd also like to mention, if numbers stay as they are, that I'll have two, one opening on the Parks and Rec Commission and an opening on the Appeals Board. So I've advertised, and I just wanted to say this on TV, so if anyone knows of anyone that's interested, please have them contact me.
And Mayor Protem?
Yes, I just wanted to put on my public health hat and say, if you are over 65 and have not gotten your shingles shot, I cannot recommend it more highly. Shingles is a latent chickenpox virus that lives in your anterior horn cells, and as you age, it tends to come out. And it is so painful. You get like chickenpox rash, and it follows a dermatome. The worst cases are when it affects your face and your eyes. I've seen people hospitalized with shingles all over their face and eyes. It's horrible. One out of three people over 65 will get it. One out of three folks. Please get your shingles shot. It is a horrible, horrible recurrence. So if you're over 65, really consider it. It doesn't necessarily get covered by insurance, I'm not sure, but it's well worth it. One day of shingles, and you'll be so sorry you did not get the shot.
And I would like to mention that I am over 65, and I have had my shingles shot.
Good for you. I have too.
Any other comments?
I have a quick comment.
Okay.
I just, I'd just like to announce to the folks at home that we're going to be having another Citizens Academy. We'll probably announce it before Christmas, and we plan on putting it on around January or February. So if they're interested in learning about what your police do, it's a 10-week course, and it gives you a pretty good overview. So if you know anybody, just send them our way.
Okay, and I'll comment that I have gone through most of the academy. I wasn't able to attend every meeting. It's so informative. It forms a stronger bond between the, our law enforcement and our citizens. It educates our citizens so that we're so much aware, much more aware of all of the things that our law enforcement does for us. You just have to experience. So I highly recommend it. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.